Please.
Here. You have a forum. First on the agenda is action on the meetings from the regular minutes for the March 7th meeting. Where someone move the minutes, please. Any changes, corrections, additions?
This is to get Michelle off the hook, but I was actually the one who reported on the parks and rec. You haven't noticed that Michelle explained what happened in parks and rec.
Okay.
It was me. And I'm trying to contain the credit as much as somebody from parks and rec comes in and goes, that didn't happen.
Which page?
Oh, it's, okay, wait a minute.
Well, I see, I'm page three.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And you're...
It was towards the end.
Oh, under my records, it should be in the brief.
Yeah.
You have that? Any other questions that we see? Seeing none, all favor of the amendments as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, minutes amended and approved. Next up is the approval of the agenda. Someone move the agenda, please. I support Roberts. Any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, all in favor of the agenda? Say aye.
Aye.
None, alright, agenda is approved. Public hearings, we have none scheduled for tonight. Pre-rates citizen participation, we have no pre-rates citizen participation tonight either. Reports of officers. Chairman report, I don't have a report tonight. Anything else for the planning commissioners? That want to report in the subcommittee? Okay, was ZB a meeting yet? Alright. Ooh, exciting. In the calendar. Okay, so that covers our committee reports. Anything from council law to report? Alright, great. Alright, so we'll move right to the community development office report, Michelle.
Okay, so, nothing verbal to update you right now.
Okay. Good. Any questions from Michelle? Alright. That's okay. Alright, citizens wishing to address the commission, so at this time, if anybody would like to step forward and address the commission, you may do so, and we will also be checking online. So, at this time, is anybody who's watching online? I should know this by now, but it's what, star?
Star nine on your phone.
Star nine on your phone. Raise your hand. Not seeing any hands online, I don't see anybody step. Forward at this time, okay, so we will move on to all business. Item A. Under all business is the Mill Creek Brewery Special Land Use. Although at this time, I believe we're looking at the parking request waiver only tonight, correct? Okay.
So...
So this time staff, Michelle, please.
So, you're right, Matt, last month, you were scheduled to conduct a public hearing for the purposes of considering the special land use request. Step was submitted by the applicant Dexter Mill Davies LLC. The applicants were seeking preliminary site plan and special land use assembly for a whole-service restaurant with an accessory nano brewery, an outdoor service area for the other seating, and bike rental and bike repair shop, and this would all be located at 8081 Main Street. You did have a forum, made sure you remember to conduct a meeting, unfortunately, due to Commissioner Phillips needing, recusing self, that took away having the forum. Planning commission is still, they still allowed the applicant to make their presentation, which they did. Staff provided their reports, as did consultants, both engineering and planning, excuse me, NDAFD. You also allowed the, you opened a public hearing, even though you knew you'd be and allowed the public to provide comments. After the public hearing, the planning commission and the applicant, the planning commission discussed, again without a forum, the parking requirements, parking waivers, and the payment of parking action, as well as existing parking within the vicinity. And although you were not able to take official action at that meeting, it did allow the applicant to believe a significant amount of information and some direction, which ultimately led to what was, what they come to me tonight for. So, the applicant has submitted a written request asking the planning commission to waive 28 of 87 on-street parking spaces, which are required to serve the proposed use of all of it. In support of that request, in accordance with Section 5.03A, the applicant also is offered to make a voluntary contribution to the city's parking fund in lieu of providing 15 additional regular, providing 15 regular required on-street parking spaces. The applicants have also indicated that they intend to ask city council to reduce the per-parking space fee from $9,000 to $2,500, with a provision that they pay over a number of years. What they're doing with that request is similar to the one submitted by Beretta Gales, which city council would approve in lieu of 2019. If the planning commission grants the applicant's request to waive the 28 spaces, and if the planning commission accepts the applicant's voluntary offer for contributing to the parking fund in lieu of providing the 15 required spaces, a total of 44 onsite parking spaces would be allowed to serve the proposed use. That is, any action to to any action you would take on the parking waivers does not relieve the applicant from coming back and going through the full site review and or pressure process. The applicant is coming to you today because the parking, as has been discussed before, is the make or break, is fragile. And to go to, to follow the normal procedure with an engineering plan, et cetera, would be an expense that the applicant can't afford to make if if a parking, if the waiver of parking, if there can't be company agreement somewhere on that. So, it is outside your normal standard process, but that's the background to law. You have the written request in the packet today. You have their special, I said, a site plan review and special land use application, as well as the preliminary site plan. You have the staff's initial review, as well as Carla Orkman's review and their parking requirement summary. The engineers' review and DAFD review have not been provided because they are not applicable right now to the parking waiver that's being requested. So, in summary, the applicant's asking for the waiver of the 28 spaces, it's 32% of the number of spaces that are required. The applicant is also proposing a payment in lieu for 15 required spaces, and that's where Section 503B. As I've already explained, this is a make or break decision, and the reason why is following not your traditional process. Section 501G allows the planning commission to waive all or parts of off-street parking that's required for a project. Whenever it finds that such a deviation, is more likely to provide a sufficient number of parking spaces to accommodate the specific characteristics of the use being proposed for the use in question. Any required parking that's not waived under 501G is eligible for an additional or further waiver, provided an applicant voluntarily, voluntarily offers in writing to contribute a one-time fee to the city's parking fund in an amount established by the city council for the number of spaces being eligible for that additional waiver. And that's all in accordance with 503B. According to the city's parking study, and this is a summary, quick summary of what was discussed or provided in your meeting in March. There are over 900 parking spaces, both on-street and in public parking lots. And over 800 of those spaces are within a five-minute walk, as measured from the center of town being named in Barstow. And just for context, generally speaking, a quarter of a mile, or 1,320 feet, represents the distance an average human can walk in a five-minute time period. The five-minute walk is also the standard, and it is best described as the average distance a pedestrian is actually willing to walk before opting to drive. But that's also been a change based on the destination. So, you have in the packet a visual of what a five-minute walk is from the center of town. In a linear, as the crow flies distance, on page nine of the packet, you see a more realistic representation. You see what that five-minute walk is, somebody actually taking the steps in a 1,320-foot distance. And so you see that it's different from that linear, as the crow flies, sort of distance. But it's still, as measured from the applicant's proposed site, you can get to quite a number of parking spaces. That's 450 on-street or public parking lot spaces within a five-minute walk. What the planning commission must balance against that information are the factors that would affect the distance that people are willing to walk before reaching their destination. Those factors include the street pattern. Is it a grid? Is it curvilinear? Is it up and down topography? All kinds of things. Sidewalk design, environmental factors, weather, topography, and safety, which in this case might be a mid-block crossing on Main Street, or the Main Street Bridge sidewalk, not to mention the purpose for the walk. Walking trips to go to shopping and dining, errands and reaching, reaching transportation and bus stop, those tend to be shorter, five minutes. Whereas, walking for trips to, to get to a public parking, a public park, or that type of destination is gen, could generally be a ten-minute walk. So in summary, planning commission must determine if a deviation from the requirements of Section 503A, in accordance with Section 503, 501G and 503B, to allow 44 spaces, will result in a sufficient number of spaces to accommodate the proposed use. The fact, the following factors are provided for the planning commission's consideration and discussion prior to any action. The subject site is located adjacent to a walkable downtown, just across Mill Creek. Pedestrians and bicyclists can safely access the site via network of sidewalks and non-motorized pathways. There are more than 450 public parking spaces on-site in parking lots, within a five-minute walk of the site. And the applicant has voluntarily offered in writing to contribute to the city's parking fund in lieu of providing 15 parking spaces of the required need. So you have a suggested motion for you, but there is also an opportunity for you to discuss this further. And then the applicant is also here, as well as the applicant representatives tonight, to provide you with their, their presentation and discussion, or to answer any questions.
Thank you, Michelle, for, so at this time, does the applicant have a presentation they want to make, or anything additionally they want to add? Obviously... Oh, she is, okay. We have the information.
Hello.
Good evening, everyone. Alison Bishop here from sunny Huntington Beach, California. I don't really have a formal presentation, other than to kind of hit some highlights from the last meeting. Can you not hear me?
I didn't read. Yeah, exactly, somehow we fixed it. I don't know. Someday we'll...
Can you guys hear me?
I can.
I'm not muted online.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it's not you, Alison, right?
Oh, okay.
Right, Alison?
I can hear you.
Yeah, like, there's no light or anything, it's just supposed to be...
I can hear you, Alison.
Okay.
But I'm not in that room, so...
Okay.
Do you see the speakers?
I had, I had happened to...
I'm not sure, but this is not working.
Michelle, if it helps, I can hear her remotely, so I don't know if that will help you track your problem, but...
Do you think they, do you think they just heard you?
I don't know. No one answered me, so I'm not sure.
So...
Is it just volume down?
She can hear us, but we can't hear her.
Yes.
Check your toolbox and see if you've got something else, click like headphones if you're in there.
I said same ass. So I think it's, it did route it through speaker. It's not routing through headphones, I saw her thing, yes, because that's happened to me before.
Happened to me all the time.
But Donna can hear Alison, is that right?
Yes, I can, yes, I can, very clearly. No, that was a compliment, that wasn't anything. You don't expect me to relay it for you, kiddo.
They can't, but they can't hear me, but they can hear you.
They can hear me.
I don't know.
Have a formal presentation. She's in Huntington Beach, California.
Right here, we've got speakers.
Are those Samsung or not?
Are those Samsung?
Okay, try it now, Alison.
Can you guys hear me?
Oh, I can barely hear them.
I've got the volume all the way up.
It's a Samsung.
It's your computer.
Michelle?
Oh, shoot.
Oh, no.
Okay. Bye, Alison. Can you guys hear me now, or no?
I think I heard somebody say they can barely hear you, just, just a couple seconds ago, I'm not sure, but I think I heard that.
If you go to the source, you might be able to, if it's the HDMI, select the HDMI.
The source, the HDMI?
Yeah, so it's sourced from there.
Yeah.
Yes. And then there should be...
PC, that's what you want.
Yeah, there we go. Okay, so that's right.
Oh, there goes, keep going.
Can you...
Donna, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Alison, it's fixed.
And you're muted.
We think it's fixed.
She thinks it's fixed, Alison. I, I don't know, because I, I have always been able to hear both of you. She, Michelle just said she thinks it's fixed.
Okay, can you guys hear me now?
Yeah, it's getting better, so I guess just, the best by TV is gonna be really loud, but... Oh.
Okay, go ahead.
Alright, so, sorry about that, you want me to turn myself down?
Not you.
Okay. Good evening, from California, about five o'clock here, so... I guess I just have a brief presentation. We've been before you guys a number of times, and hopefully, collectively, you've all heard the spiel, but we were before you in December, and then again in February, and then again in March, hoping to get approval for a 9,300-square-foot restaurant. It would be a great asset to downtown Dexter. After the last meeting, we kind of reconvened and, and strategized on what the next steps would be, and we're prepared to make all the final, or all the changes to the site plan, so that we can present, hopefully, a combined preliminary and final site plan. We'll submit in May for the June meeting, addressing all of the comments that have been raised, and some of the concerns that have been raised by the planning commission. But before we do that, we really need to know how the city is going to allow us to move forward with the parking. As you know, the, the site is only 1.57 acres, and we've, we've maximized the parking with all of the other site constraints, with the railroad, the road commissions right-of-way, the creek, also having the building and the stormwater. We've been able to maximize 44 parking spaces. It's a pretty significant investment into the project, so Justin and Nate have, have pulled their resources together and can, can basically offer the city to pay for 15 parking spaces. So we're requesting a 32% waiver, which is a reduction of 28 parking spaces, based on the, the site's proximity to the downtown, the trails, and just being more of an urban design, not wanting to have an expansive parking lot that, that just takes away from the, the views along the creek and the views along the park, and may really make, really, really take advantage of the downtown urban setting. We think that it's an appropriate amount of parking, and we hope that the planning commission will take a look at our letter that was included in the packet, that highlights a lot of the goals and objectives in the master plan, and particularly the clause in the parking study that says that it's appropriate for there to be a 20% to 40% parking reduction with the project very similar, and with a lot of the, the advantages that this project will bring to the downtown. So we hope that you will consider that, consider the economic impact that the project will bring to the city of Dexter, as well as the, the, I guess, the benefits to the community for a walkable destination. The destination that will bring people downtown to patronize other establishments in the community, and really, I guess, just bringing more restaurants to town with all of the residential developments that are occurring and have been approved in the city. There's more people who are in a position to walk downtown, and so we think that this is a really big asset to the community, and, and hopefully, we can, we can come to an agreement and, and decide how we can move this project forward. So that's all I really have. As I mentioned earlier, we'll be before you again, assuming this goes well, the special land use approvals, but based on the feedback that we heard at the last meeting, and the conformance with the master plan, we feel as though the project is, is a real asset to the community. So, Michelle, thank you for your help and your review, and we look forward to hearing your additional comments, thank you.
Thank you, we, we may have some questions for you, not sure at this time. Okay, so is there anybody else from the applicant team that wants, okay, alright, we have that covered, so, again, so, now it's planning commission discussion time, as Michelle had mentioned, we do have, we've got good information in the packet, but as well as a suggested motion on page 10, and obviously, Michelle and staff, or, sorry, the applicant available with questions, yes, or Mr. Perry first?
That, before I make a motion, I have a question procedurally. There's obviously an offer here to make voluntary payment for a certain number of spots. We obviously can't volunteer anything for the applicant. Is our only choice here to accept this offer as made, or reject?
So, when it comes to the payment, you're right, it's voluntary. You can ask the applicant, would they be willing to waive X number of spaces more, and have a discussion that way? But you couldn't make a motion that said that the voluntary contribution has to be more than less. You, the other way to come at it would be to look at those spaces, the number of, of spaces that you can waive under 501G, or you can waive 28, or you can waive more, or you can waive plus.
Or you're gonna waive if not.
Or you would correct.
So let me ask you this.
That's what I meant, is it less?
Let me ask you this. What are our options if we are willing to accept the current number of spots in the plan, which is 44? But we believe that all of it should be paid for. All of the waived spots should be paid for.
So, you can make that, you would make that statement if you were so inclined as the board were to make the motion. But you would then say we are not willing to waive any spots under 501, because then it goes into 503B, as far as...
So that motion would be to find that the project has a sufficient number of parking spaces, but they were not willing to waive any under 501. Therefore, leaving the applicant with the option to offer to, to pay for the rest or not, is that it?
Right.
Right, I'm gonna move that exact motion. I'm gonna move to find that pursuant, wouldn't be to 501G, would it?
It's... Yes, but, so you're saying you want them to provide...
I'm saying I want a motion that says I have no issue with the number of parking spots
On-site.
On-site on the current plan, because I believe that should be the business owner's decision. If he thinks, if he or she thinks it's a sufficient number of spots, that's fine. But that, for, if they want a deviation, they have to pay for a deviation. And then the applicant gets the decision about whether they want to pay for those, those spots or not.
Yeah, so the first one would be the same, would remain the same, and then two... Yeah.
The only way.
Change.
Hang on, guys. Michelle's gonna answer our question.
The only, the only way you could find that 44 spaces were sufficient would be if the applicant was voluntarily saying we will pay for the 43.
Okay, then I have my motion to make.
So, but.
I have my motion to make. I move to reject this request. And well, I'll explain why if we get a second.
Second.
Okay. I'm gonna move to reject this request.
So sorry, there's a motion on the floor. Move, Cardy, is, I believe it's Roberts. Support Roberts to, I mean, you may be making a new motion, but at this time, it's, it would be the to did not, or will not. So you would be rejecting the current offer on the table, basically.
Correct. Yes, and that's where I think it's most aptly phrased. As I said at the last meeting, I think waiving these spots is a subsidy of one restaurant over other restaurants in our town. We have other restaurants that have come here beforehand that have established themselves, that have been good citizens, that are currently paying into the downtown parking fund. And each business has to stand on its own. And this business can comply with our rules, can offer to pay for the variation it wants, can go to the city, can talk to the city about what it should pay per spot, can talk to the city council. That's not our decision. We don't, we don't get to weigh in on that. We don't have anything to do with. City council, if they think this project is so valuable, can charge them less, can charge them more. I find it, I have to say, insulting to say that this project lives or dies on us waiving 28 spots. And I'll tell you why. At the $2,500 per spot that they're currently proposing, that's $70,000. In the grand scheme of this project, that is nothing. And I certainly respect any business owner that is trying to get the best deal they can. That's their job. Their job is to get the best deal they can for their business. No problem trying to do this. But to say that this is make or break, to try to put that somehow on the planning commission is a tactical error and cannot be seen as accurate. What it is, is asking us to essentially kick in $70,000 to support one business over other businesses. And I'm fundamentally opposed to that. So that's why I've moved the way I have. I think that this business is a good plan. I'm in favor of it. I would frequent it. It would be a good addition to our town, but that it does not deserve a $70,000 subsidy from the city. If they want to build there, they can build there. And they can work out with the city council what they should pay for the remaining spots. That's my decision.
Okay, thank you. So we do have a good motion on the table now? And yeah, thank you.
I just have a question.
We have a second too, I should mention.
Okay, yes, and we did have a second, correct? Yes, thank you.
So I just want to make sure I'm understanding this correctly. So I was under the impression that they wanted to pay in lieu for 15 regular spots and have us waive 28 spots.
Correct.
So that's even less money. Of $37,500, $2,500 versus $135,500 if they actually paid $9,000.
Correct.
Okay, so I just want to make sure.
I was trying, when I said $70,000, I was using the $2,500 per dollar because that's what.
For all the spots.
Yes.
We do not.
175.
If we waive nothing, I just want to be clear on this. We waive nothing. They would need to pay for 43 spots. If they paid for 43 spots, again, add $2,500, which we have no input in. That's just what they say they're willing to pay. That would be a total of $107,500.
I agree with you 100%.
So, and I think that's important. If they had come to us and simply said we can't meet your requirements on the parking, but we're willing to pay the same thing erratic ales did per spot for the waived spot, I think this planning commission would be voting yes on this right now. I would be voting yes on it.
Yes.
Okay, just a counter argument. They, in the initial presentation, they did a pretty good discussion of comparing Dexter to some other communities and that we tend to run high on our parking. And this, the 83, was it the total? That's, that's the Dexter parking sector. Which is hot.
Let Megan address that for you. She was able to, instead of looking at all those restaurants, break it into specific pieces, which didn't do from our standard, which you said.
Okay, but anyway, that argues to me that maybe that there's some, you know, maybe there's some room for pulling back from the maximum as it's currently.
Did you have something additional?
Well, just in our review, what I would direct you to is where we discussed the parking, which is on to be and you'll see that there was, you know, restaurants, the group space and retail. So, and looking at that and to client commissioner Robert's point and to what the applicant pointed out in their application, the 12,000, 12 spaces per thousands per feet gross floor area, looking at some other zoning ordinances, is a bit higher. However, that's not your standard or your waiver. The standard for the waiver is if what, you know, is you can waive them with noting that the, it lets you permit deviations from the required parking span is required more or less when it finds the deviation is more likely is more likely to provide enough parking spaces to accommodate the specific characteristics of the use in question. So it's a question of use and so in looking at that point and then to what kind of, I think, what Michelle was bringing up is that because it is brewery, then you're using space in different ways than if it was surely all restaurants, that 12 spaces per thousands per feet. However, and I also while I think that we should, you as a planning commission should look at the look at your zoning and zoning borders to make sure that those regulations are correct. Right now, you're bound by what's in your zone. And so I feel like, you know, looking at what some other communities have in using that as a basis of decision isn't that solid in terms of you making findings and making motions and decisions as it is about what the characteristics of the site are and what the characteristics of the proposed use are.
Yeah, I understand that, but I just feel like the 15 is sort of arbitrary. Do they pick? Why did they pick it? I don't know.
But that's, we're bound by, it's like saying speed limit 75, but once, this is the law.
Yeah, but the 15, the 15 is, is just their idea, right?
Right, but that's why, that's why we're locked in. Can't offer them anything else. It's voluntary. You can't offer.
Okay, so we're, so we're stuck. Okay.
We're stuck. All right, that's what I was trying to do.
So the first the first section, they give you the flexibility, is 501, is 501G. And that's why in my review, the Mirek's review this time talks about, okay, they're asking you for a waiver, 28 spaces. What parking is around, that could be relaxed. That's the public part. That's why the information of the five minute walk and the number of parking spaces within that five minutes. So if you're looking for a platform or a finding, that's a solid finding. You don't have to use it, but if you wanted to, that's a solid finding. When it comes to the next step, which is if you were to accept the 28 spaces based on that and you come and you look, okay, there's still 15 deficient. They're saying, yes, we see that deficiency and we're willing to pay for those. We'll talk to city council. This is what we'll ask them for, just like erratic ales did. So the question in front of you, and I know the judge has made the motion, Karen seconded it. The rest of the discussion then is how do you, is there, is there a balance? Do you have findings? Are you comfortable with those? If not, the motion as it's been articulated, motion and seconded, stand. The question I would ask you before you take your motion is both the applicant and the applicant's representatives have their hands up. Do you want to hear from them? Are they going to counter anything? I don't know. Do you want to hear that? You're not under any obligation. But that's up to you guys.
Are we even legally allowed to hear that? Like, is this, Megan says no. I don't believe, I don't believe we're legally allowed to hear that. No, I don't think at all. I don't think we can conduct negotiations with an applicant live at a meeting. And I mean, that is a serious legal matter.
No, I get what you're saying. Because it's the voluntary.
Right, it looks too much like live, no, we can't do that. Yeah, I think we need to vote on the motion.
I would agree. I see Hannah, but we can't really get the audience right now, sorry.
We can, we can talk, we can talk as much as we want. Yes.
Clarity here. Can somebody explain to me clearly what the difference is between what they're asking for and what we granted erratic ales?
So erratic ales, if I remember correctly, they had to provide 20 some spaces more than what was in the parking lot. Planning commission reduced that number and they had to, there were five spaces that weren't reduced and they had to pay for those five spaces.
The reason we did it for erratic ales was because down the whole street that erratic ales was on, there was parking right there.
This is also much different. I mean, I like that we're using erratic ales, but
I agree.
It's a much different example. I mean, that is literally just beer. This is. Right. And plus the bike rental on this is a little bit of an asterisk that we can't.
Right, that we kind of keep skipping over.
Right, which could be a significant toll driver. Oh, sorry, Chad had a question, I think, a while ago. Do you still have it?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
An observation and a question.
Yes.
Megan, Carl Warman put together what we were just talking about, that has all of the other cities around, what their parking requirements are. Would have been very helpful for that summary to include what it equated to relative to what we're talking about here. I am totally sympathetic with reducing the amount of parking if there's plausible reason to do it. And maybe because the city of Dexter is high and we can say, well, look, given what everybody else in the world is doing, maybe we can consider reducing that. Maybe we can't, but that's why I was, that would have been nice to have that. So, observation number two is this walking distance and the amount of parking is not accurate in the sense that it's not centered on the new building. The walking is to the center of town rather than to the new building. And if in fact that was, if in fact it was centered on the building, it would actually pick up some of the Westridge subdivision as well and perhaps would alter the total amount of parking that's available, auxiliary parking, because it's going to be less of the city or the main part of the city. So I, it concerns me. I don't think it'll affect where you have your direct line, the red lines there, relative to getting to erratic ales. But I know darn well it'd be one that goes over to West, Westridge as well. If I live over there, I might park at the end of that walkway and walk on across the bridge and everything. My point is, it's not accurate in that sense, being on the center of downtown rather than on their new building.
No, so page nine of this document, that five minute walk, that's the actual person walking.
Yep.
See where the star is on the property?
Yep.
That was the measurement. It was from there
I got you.
to the other.
I got you.
I didn't include the pathway to Westridge because I could not on the map accurately find the pathway. So that's why Westridge isn't shown.
Gotcha. But my point is, as much as anything, is there's going to be a whole lot less parking available within that five minute walking distance if in fact that whole circle is shifted to the west. Maybe it makes no difference. I don't know. But those are my two points and questions.
I get, I get what you're saying.
This circle is centered on the center, but these walking questions are not.
I got you.
So if you shift the circle over, they're gonna go to the edge right here where that walk.
And I agree with that, but a little point more was that the amount of available parking was based on that large circle.
No, no, the 450 that I cited is from county, the parking spaces based on our last work. You have only 900 within the entire downtown. You have 800 some within the five minute walk of the center of town as the profile. The numbers that I did were based on the actual walking and counting the spaces on street and in the parking lot.
Okay, all right. But anyway, my point, my point is, I have no issue with reduce, if there's a logical way to reduce the amount of parking that those folks have to provide, I'm all for that. But if it's, I'm in favor of the motion on the table right now. But I'm sympathetic to the whole idea of reducing the amount of parking if in fact you don't need all that parking. That's my point.
Okay, thank you. And I think someone else had a hand. I know Kyle also, maybe, now you got a question or comment?
Just a comment. So I'm with Chad. I'm all good, guys. Well, I'm in favor of the use of it. And also, I would be voting no on this motion. For all reasons, and I'm glad that you made this motion, Jeff. Because it brings me back to this idea, as I was reading through this 800 pages of zoning and digging into this thing, I realize that this document it isn't perfect. Especially, we'll be better. But it is, you know, we're imagining it as some perfect document that was came from somewhere and is, contains no errors and should not be the basis of conversation, which should in fact be the end of the conversation. And in fact, that's why we're evaluating this, weighing in, use our judgment of a situation, a situation that ain't a. And so that's why I disagree with this motion, I think, throwing the whole thing out. I mean, I also take some exception with the subsidy characterization of this. Because you go across the street and this is central business now, stones throw away and there's absolutely no parking required. What kind of subsidy is that to a restaurant that chooses to locate and that's out of the city this time? Okay, because it happens to be in this other zoning district which is available anyway. So is there a subsidy? Is it a subsidy or is it, is it a arbitrary number which has been before probably without weighing the logic of the situation and it's, it's doesn't match. Doesn't match. So in my opinion, I, I favor the flexible approach as far as looking at it. I think it's a pretty nice job of making the case. That there's a lot of parking. But to me. If we are gonna expect you to walk here. Me, the issue is that the sidewalks.
I feel one.
We've got that one that goes right along the street. Everybody speeding up down there and then you have to cross that entrance to the park. This came with the parks. The whole entrance to that park and then we've got the bridge and. You know. People walk, but it's not the best walk in town. So that's something to think about.
Good, good points. Michelle, and then I know Jim has, do you have something?
I was just gonna say, you would let the people in the audience know that you can't take. Any comments from the applicant at this time. The motion's on this table.
Yes, okay, um, guess I could repeat that. Okay, we're not taking any comments from the, um, audience. At this time, because we do have a current motion on the floor, which means we're not, we can't open up for discussion outside of commission. So, um, at this time, we're, we have to stay within internal communications with the planning commission. Um, yes, Mr. Cardy?
Kyle, I think we agree more than we disagree in some, in some ways. But the one thing that I have to start out with that we can't really disagree about is that it's not, it's not arbitrary. Like, we can agree or disagree that it's right. Okay. But right, that's, there you go. We can agree that it is, and therefore what we're bound by. Because this is why, hear me out. We can't, the way the law is written, say, we'll approve this if you'll pay something. And then if we just, if we could do that, then the city council, which is the elected body, which has. Much more power than we do. Could negotiate to whatever that fee could be. But the law doesn't allow us to do that. If we were allowed to do that, I would propose we pass that motion, but we're not allowed to do that. And so I think that's how I mean, I think we're more on the same page than not on the same page. In a way, we're just disagreeing about who should be making that proposal. I don't think we're bound, I don't think we're legally allowed to make that proposal. Um, and as I said to you, if they had come here and said. You know, we're voluntarily willing to pay for all of the spots that we want waived. It's just a matter of negotiation. We could say yes, go negotiate with the city council, and I would. Um, and then the city council could say, you only have to pay a dollar per spot. Not our job. Not our responsibility.
Um.
I don't disagree with that.
Yeah.
I think I missed that.
And interestingly, I think the sidewalk is, is part of why this is a tricky question. Like. My general inclination is to let the business owner decide how many spots they need on, on the property. You can make your, if you think you can make your business work with that many spots, that's not for me to say one way or the other. But, but. But I, I do have questions. Like, that sidewalk is pretty. I don't know. I don't know. If I had little kids, I don't know if I want to walk over that bridge at a high traffic time. And that's why, like, are those forty-four spots good enough? I don't know if I roll my business dice on it, but that's not my call. So. Anyway, that's how I see it.
So your position really is that it's bad. We, we can't say, oh, yes, we can give twenty-five hundred bucks a spot. It's kind of outside.
Can't say, yeah. I wish it could.
Wait, we can, but we can, you're suggesting asking, they're not asking you to make a motion.
No.
They provided you what they're going to ask council for so that there's transparency and clarity in knowing. The full. Reason for what they're asking.
So then to Jimmy's point about us having the legal authority to reduce these number of required spots. Is there a provision in the code which does allow us to do that?
Oh, yeah, we could reduce them. We just can't, we can't. We can't put a price on it.
Right.
Okay, so this, so the second motion is we can legally make it. And we can insert numbers. We can't insert the second.
No, we can't insert it. We can't, because it's voluntary. What we can't make.
Okay. Put amounts of parking in. The way this motion is written is, is accurate. They're asking you to waive twenty-eight spaces based on five oh one G. You can accept that number or you don't accept the number.
We can't counter offer. We can either, we can only vote, we could only vote yes on what they offered us or vote no.
Jim, you can't counter off on fifteen. You can take the twenty-eight as they proposed. In which case, the voluntary part falls in line. You can reject the twenty-eight and say, well, we'll allow you to have more than twenty-eight bodies. Or less than nine, as I've said before. Excuse me. That's not negotiating with fifteen. That's just following five oh one G.
Respectfully disagree, but that's fine.
Okay, I, when I'm confused, we could, if, if we were, you know, customizing this motion number two. For what they've said they want, we would, the first insert number would be a waiver of. Twenty-eight spaces, okay, and then pursuant to five oh three B. We can approve an additional waiver of fifteen. So that gets them to the full, full, full number of parking places. Subject to the applicant selecting to contribute. And I don't see why we can't say. I mean, I wonder why I don't have a good reason to change those numbers. So that's why that would be kind of a motion I would have made, but. Um, nevertheless, I don't see why we can't say we're going to waive. You know, twenty spaces and they're going to have to come up with eighteen. Just because they suggested fifteen doesn't mean we have to.
At that point, you would make the second part of the motion. Because they haven't voluntarily offered. You could, you could say, to use your number, we waive twenty spaces and you leave it at that.
Okay, so in other words, they're, they're official, they're, this is official, what they've said that their plans are, and we have to stick with it. We can't.
You can't negotiate with fifteen. The twenty-eight though is negotiable because it's five oh one. So whatever you do with the five oh one. Dictates what they have to come back with or whatever's the name.
So we stick to the fifteen in that second part. So they're subject to, and they're going to go ask, you're going to, they're voluntary, they're going to pay you too. Then we say we're only going to waive twenty. What happens to those extra eight spaces?
That's their decision to make. You don't then accept just the fifteen. Because it doesn't take care of the remainder.
Can I suggest we vote on that?
That's what I was.
Yeah, yeah.
I think we need to vote on this and then we'll go back.
We're just voting on this and then they can come back. That's essentially it. We'll probably have more discussion.
Yes, either way, I think we have more discussion. So. You got it? Um, okay, so Mr. Cardy, you have the motion for support Roberts, and that was basically, um, that would be. Well, actually, you want to read through, can you read, or what is your motion? I, I want to make sure I have it straight. It's exactly what you're.
I think we're just voting that it will not provide a sufficient amount of parking that allows them to come back and make another proposal.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to get to is exact, so that we can get it relayed adequately.
If you're, if you're using the motion that's here. To use for Jim.
Yes.
It's just will not denies and rejects.
And rejects, yeah, okay. That's what I just wanted to make sure that you, okay.
The sample motion will not deny some checks.
Okay, so, and that's the motion you support Roberts, or you support every sport discussion. Okay. So yes, I think at this time we could call that, uh, I think we'll need a roll call vote on that, please.
Okay, Roberts?
No.
Marsh?
No.
Wines?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Hubbard? Cardy?
Yes.
Italy?
Yes.
Phillips? Wellesky?
No. Let me keep that this. And keep typing my.
That's four and four.
Okay. So, yeah, so it does not. So then we, okay, so we're back.
So the motion doesn't, it doesn't pass.
Correct.
So a second motion.
Yeah, that's correct. Yep, we need a second one. So, um, okay, so we're back at this point. So, okay, so let's see.
Okay, and pursuant to section five oh one G of the zoning ordinance, the planning commission approves a waiver of twenty-eight. Spaces, twenty-eight of eighty-seven all-street parking spaces required in section five oh three. And then pursuant to section five oh three B of the zoning ordinance, the planning commission. Approves the waiver of an additional fifteen. Uh, required all-street parking spaces subject to the applicant electing to contribute a one-ten fee to the city's parking fund. In an amount established by the resolution of city council in lieu of providing the additional park, number of parking spaces in accordance with section five oh three B. So in other words, it's just what they asked for.
Okay, so let's move backwards, support us. I was at Hill and Marsh. Marsh, okay, square Marsh.
So you're doing a will, approves and accepts.
So that's the motion as presented. Okay. Alright, so now back open for additional discussion. So again, what is before us right now is the motion exactly as presented. So that would be what the petitioners put forward. Yes, Mr.?
With this motion. It's approved, then it goes to council. That's the next step.
Yes.
At this part. They'll go to council. If it's approved, they'll go to council, but they'll go in the whole. Recommendation, combined cycling would go.
Is this signed, sealed and delivered this piece of it, or is there room for that? Decision to be raised, I mean, that, this whole question to be raised again.
Once the planning commission makes their motion and votes on it. It's done at planning commission. They'll still have to come into their cycling and special use. The motion that you made today is basically a determination. It gets wrapped into whatever site plan and special meaning use motion you made or recommendation to then to council.
Am I correct that, that this waiver of parking that was just our call, the city council will not reconsider that, right?
Correct. They, they, they don't have the authority of the ordinance.
But the fee is different.
They have.
We wave it.
But the fee is different. The fee is not set. Council decides specifically on whether or not to grant that fee. So that's why we don't necessarily, kind of, what.
If this is voted down, this is the motion, then everything's set back another month? Or whatever.
If this is, if this motion is denied, denied, the applicant has to decide. Are we coming back or is this project? In other words, do they want to come back with other numbers?
And they're not going to kill this project a percent, that's not, no matter what. This is a question about whether we essentially subsidize one business over. I've already given my statement, but what this is, is this is giving them exactly what they want, a full subsidy over our existing businesses. And I just couldn't, couldn't disagree with them.
Additional discussion here? Seeing both, cut, wait, seven hundred, yeah.
So this is really to give a. Numbers based on this site. Which is going to require, so they can go ahead and see whether the site is worth trying to develop now. If the lot has to be bigger than this.
Or the lot isn't going to get any bigger. It's what it is.
So the question is. You know, A, did it the best it could out getting a lot of here. My opinion, it's a huge part of the side of the bill. But if they, they're going to have to come back with a recital, we're going to have to get that. If they want to take our culture and see whether this works or not, then find out from the city council. Are you okay with this number of waived spots and?
No, that's going to all go in one piece though, correct? Yeah, that's going to pause. So it's the parking action, as I understand it, would kind of pause tonight until, like, no matter, almost. Well, even if we approve this tonight, it's still going to kind of pause until they come back to us with the final combined. And I think they said Ju- June, May June, and then that'll lead up. Again, with the parking request to go to council. So council's going to get everything at one turn.
Unless I misunderstood what they're asking for. Once planning commissions made the decision. Excuse me. I hadn't anticipated, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, I didn't anticipate that you were going to the council. Or council plus them, because that's a final action with the site. What you needed was planning commissions.
Correct.
determinate that because only so much fits.
Okay.
Yep. Wait, sorry, I'm sorry. We can't get into.
I have a question for Jim, actually. So with city council's ability to negotiate the fee. Based on this motion, is there a way that you think we could leverage that to make it equitable?
Not us, not the planning.
No, 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 I, I bet us, the city council.
I, I, I hate to even say anything about that. It's not my, it's not my job and.
I'm just trying to.
I know, I know. I mean, I, yeah, I.
Because I get where you're coming from.
Right.
But I'm going to, you know, I'm going to, I'm in a different position on this with what I'm, you know.
Yeah.
Exactly. I think, I mean, there's no, no question. It's a, it's a tough, it's a tough decision. I mean, I think, um. It, I guess, yeah, at the end of the day, we look, and I think Kyle did a good job. I think I'm looking at what ultimately will end up at that site. And I think how you kind of summarized it up pretty good. I mean, they, you can't really put much smaller of a building really on there. And the parking, they maximize that parking on site. Um, I, I got, I'm, I was torn. I mean, I'm not the, I'm not a huge fan of parking anywhere and, and parking's not necessarily a problem to me, but. Because it kind of solves itself and I believe the applicant, again, is going to plan for what they know they can do, but, um. Again, I think, I, so I'm struggling with the offer that we have in, in front of us. I, I think last time I was clear against it based on. It didn't seem like any reasonable effort was for, for, to kind of mitigate our concerns against what, um, other businesses may have. I think they've kind of tried to do that now, so. That's where I'm kind of struggling to, to weigh both of these. Another concern that I do have is. A little bit of that it is kind of a unique business and hopefully a very successful, unique business. So. Um, as far as the mix of uses on that site, which is different than anything else we might have in this. And, um, if that is successful, that can be a significant traffic generator right there. Um, but again, if you look at the location directly across, I mean, from the CBD, and I think. Walkability, I think people walk to it. It's a destination. They'll walk across that bridge and they'll walk down that sidewalk, so. Um, I mean, it can definitely be improved, but I'm not as concerned about that. Um. So, uh, yeah, I mean, I think it, and I, I do think our ordinance asks for a little bit much as far as parking, but I know that's not necessarily the question. So I guess with that. Yes.
Kyle, I'll say this. If this vote fails. I'll support a motion to waive fourteen spots half, and we, and we'd halfway. If this vote fails, I'll support a motion to waive fourteen. And then they can sort it out with whether they want to pay for the rest or not. So anyway. But obviously, I'm voting no on this one.
Okay, can we vote? So that's fair. No, we didn't, well, not yet, but I think we're ready for it because I don't think there's any other, any other questions, comments. None? Okay, uh, vote please.
Wise?
Yes.
No.
Italy? No. Hubbard? Cardy?
No.
Marsh?
Yes.
Hill?
No, with an explanation.
Roberts?
Yes.
Wellesky?
Yes. You type.
Now it's a four-three, so the motion.
Okay, alright, so we're back to.
Great.
I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, okay, yep, that's right. Okay, so now we're back square one again. Motion.
All right, I'll move to a fourteen. I'll say it then.
Okay, so, but I want to put that in the, sorry, the correct motion language here, so. Um, so that we can.
Provide a sufficient number of parking spots, approves the request. Well, can we, it's not the applicant's request to waive fourteen. That's what I've been hung up.
Also take out the applicant's request and approves.
Approves waiving fourteen of the eighty seven all-street parking spaces required in five oh three A.
Okay.
So, that's the motion.
Okay.
So it's the original motion, but with fourteen instead of twenty eight.
And. The front question.
We can't.
A waiver of.
Essentially. Same. They can negotiate. It is.
Yes. From hand.
It is. He sometimes gives. Two guys.
It was the second.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, what's your support on that?
I was supportive.
Okay, sorry, that's right, twice. Okay, any discussion on this? Is everybody clear? Yes, support was wise.
Well, the second was wise, I don't know who's Karen.
Okay, so everybody clear on what the motion is this time? Okay, any?
I was going to explain why, no, it's appropriate to explain that. So.
Yes.
But with this motion, I'm guessing it'll pass. They, if it were to come back, if it were defeated, then it comes back with some other options, which I think there are. That's what I was kind of looking for, but that was why.
Yeah. Makes sense. Okay, any other questions, comments? Can we have a roll call vote again, please? Oh, sorry, Kyle, yes.
One other question. Megan, you may know this answer. How does parking for this partial change with new zoning?
There is a proposed reduction in, there's a proposed reduction in the standard for parking. I can look that up if you want, but I would say that that's not a relevant finding.
Yep, I would say we leave that because that may never, may not ever happen. It, it, I mean, we're assuming it will, but yeah, I, I don't think that's relevant for our discussion at this time. It's a big question, but yeah, I don't think. Because we got to deal with what we have on the books. Okay, so anything else? If not, another roll call vote, please, third time.
Eadley?
Yes.
Wiles?
Yes.
Hubbard, yes. Roberts?
Yes.
Marsh?
No.
Hardy?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Kowalski?
Yes.
Motion passes six to two.
Okay. Okay.
Six to two.
So that's.
Seven to one.
Seven to one.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry.
I hesitated. Okay. See, Tom, we never had to make three motions in here at the table. Okay. That was, hey, moving right along now. New business, Riede, Dian, Stampin, an amendment for deviation on requirement of three point one six point D for gate on the fourth side of the dumpster. Speaking of zoning ordinances, this may seem like something we could add into there as a staff approval.
Yes, and potentially we would renew ordinance equity, but unfortunately.
Yep, no idea, your hands are tied, but I think it's a worth.
Right.
Worthy to explore this because it kind of. Haven't said that, if anybody has concerns, but with that, I guess Michelle can do some intro, please?
So, um, this was a request that I received on Thursday from, excuse me, from Jonathan Woods, who is online, um, in the audience, virtually. He's the president of the Riede, Dian, and Stampin company, and he's asking for a deviation from the requirement in section thirty, three point one six D two, which is a requirement that gates on a trash enclosure are provided on the fourth side of the dumpster enclosure. The other three sides are solid masonry. Um, the approved site plan for variety, Diane, stamping requires the recycling and dumpster enclosure to include gates in accordance with section three point one six. Section three point one six D two of the ordinance states that waste receptacles shall be enclosed on three sides with a gate on the fourth, and the gate shall not be required if the opening of the enclosure is not visible from a public street or a residential district as determined by the planning commission. So the fact that the ordinance specifically vests that with the planning commission takes that authority away from me to handle this. Um, the applicant understands and appreciates that we were able to get this on the agenda. So what I've done is I've provided you the crux of the decision, and that is how visible will this, is this from the street? So the building, the parking lot, gate landscaping is shown sort of in this gray transatlantic area. Excuse me, and it would in essence obscure the visibility, leaving a small sliver on Bishop Circle West to be able to see the dumpsters if the gates aren't there. My finding, though, to help you with your discussion, is to block that visibility would be to add just a little bit more landscaping. So three well-positioned evergreens, and you see those on the, on the sheet, would in essence block that visibility if you were inclined to allow the gates not to be required. And, and that's what I am offering for you to consider today. Um, the applicants, if you'd like to hear something.
The applicant, like to say anything?
Oh, yes, good evening, Erica Bonn. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, yes.
Great, just wanted to explain the, the reasoning of why we were looking to have those gates eliminated. The primary reason that we were looking to remove them was to improve our access for our employees for side loading from a fork truck. Um, so we're doing cardboard and wood pallet recycling in those two locations, and you can see the space on the plan there between the two bins that is intended for them to be able to drive their fork truck in so that they can load the recycling materials in those bins efficiently, and, and the gates do create some problems with the, the fork truck access. Um, that, that is the primary reason why we're asking.
Thank you. Um, we may have some questions for you.
Sure.
So, um, anything else in closing? Okay, so I think, again, at this time, we've got a sample motion on page fifty-four.
The section three point one six point D point two, and based on information presented by the applicant staff, the planning commission finds the gate shall not be required, provided the applicant pants three evergreens as cited herein to ensure the enclosure opening will not be visible from Bishop Circle West.
Okay, move Cardy.
Support.
To support Eadley.
Um, and all I'll say about this is, I mean, this is a industrial area, and I think both sides are doing the best they can to come to a reasonable solution. Seems great. All in check.
Yep, and I, and I think, as I, I don't know if everybody heard me before, but I think, as I suggested, Michelle, this could be something that is removed from the zoning ordinance, I think, in the future. I don't think any of us would necessarily lose sleep over not one gate, especially under, if the same criteria remain, you know, not visible from a public street, not adjacent to residential, so. Yeah, that's it, um. Yes.
Some of us might lose some sleep over one tree, but.
That's true.
I do have a question.
Okay.
Where did three come from as opposed to four, and the location itself of these evergreens, I think, could be better located than where you showed us here as far as site.
Depending on the site line?
If you've got these, the location of the three are just to provide you with a visual of how the site line could be obscured. I'm not married to them being right in that place, so if you've got a suggestion on where, I figured the last thing you wanted to see, though, was one straight line on a diagonal in the yellow.
Here right there.
Yep.
But I should say I do, I do think there, they could be placed a little bit better.
Okay, and I can give.
Please.
Off line.
Yes, please check for suggestions. Thank you.
Thank you to you right now.
That's plan commission service. Perfect, that is right, after hours off the clock, all right.
Um, so a question? I guess in my thinking, like, will three trees be enough, or is it bad to add a fourth tree? I'm just putting it out there, I'm not a professional like this. I'm just curious if that does anything.
I picked three because I thought that was appropriate based on my skill and experience level, but I obviously don't have any landscape architects.
Well, I'm just looking at the stagger, I'm just like thinking, like, if you had a four staggered, like, this year, you know, I'm just putting it in there.
And then anything?
I guess, I don't, I don't think the planning commission's role is to be designing things for applicants. If the applicant has some questions for Michelle, she, she, my suggestion is she, that he, or we, she, speak to Michelle about, about that. I think that's
By his location.
Secretly running through the floor left, just throw a flag out there. That's, that's not what we're deliberating, is the design of the applicant's project.
A few number of trees, right?
Or a number of trees, is it?
It's in there.
I'll just say this, if, if Michelle wants three trees, move three trees. If Michelle wants four trees, then move four trees. If Chad wants three trees, that's mine.
Yeah, I think trees, again, given what we're being asked to consider here, I think a door missing and a location, that's why, it's a relevant point, but again, unless anybody.
Also, it's industrial.
Yes, well, that's what I'm saying, exactly. Okay, so. Seeing no other discussion, could we have a roll call once, please?
Yes, Eadley, yes. Hubbard, yes. Roberts?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Wiles?
Yes.
Kowalski?
Yes. Okay, that was approved. Thank you, sir. Okay, I'm pro, propose business for next meeting, May.
Because I don't, Jonathan, the motion passed. I'll hold with you in the morning.
All right, thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Okay, propose business for next agenda, the May second meeting, the CIP, the public hearing, another zoning ordinance, zoning ordinance update review. I guess that's it for now. Michelle, yeah, because they said they're going to be submitting in May from June possibly for combined, so. Um, okay, so I guess with that, I don't, eleven citizens wishing to address the commission, we have citizens online as well as in person. Does anybody like to address the commission? Please hit star nine if you're electronic or please.
Just mention your name.
Form and addresses, state your name and address. Okay, seeing no hands raised, do we have motion adjourned? So move, move Cardy.
Support.
For Roberts, Cardy and Roberts team today. Motions and supports. All right, we are adjourned. Thank you all.